Wonderful work session. We are going to start with announcements today, so we'll start with Ms. Brog. No announcements, Mr. Hayes?
You caught me off guard.
That's okay, I'll give you a second.
A couple of seconds.
Okay.
I'll wait for most of them. Always remind folks we're day to day for our math. The closing of the Bridgestone Green Challenge, JT Moore's number two today with over 100,000 votes. So if you can Google JT Moore Bridgestone, you'll find a link that can help you vote. Please vote. JT Moore could get $25,000 to help improve green space behind the school. So please, Google JT Moore Bridgestone, you'll find it. Second, last week, co-hosted a meeting with my colleague, Mr. Pinkston, for Whaley Belmont, proposed zoning, opening of the new school. I believe we had over 120 folks in attendance, was delighted at the great attendance in this room. It was standing room only on a weeknight at 6:00. Wanted to remind folks that we are soliciting public comments around the rezoning plan, around the opening of the school. I would encourage people to email me at michael.hayes@mnps.org, for schools, or All the information's on our website. Please take a look at it, let us know if you have any comments. We'll be taking comments for another couple of weeks. Look forward to the feedback. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Pinkston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fellow board members, I want to submit notice tonight that I'll be bringing a resolution as soon as the May business meeting that would kick off a conversation about how we establish a new board policy governing the handling of constituent services and communications. As you'll recall from the January board retreat, this has been ongoing frustration and concern for me, and I believe some other members as well, since joining the board in August 2012. We've literally seen dozens of constituent issues go unresolved, some for weeks or even months at a time. It's not acceptable. I've tried to work through existing channels to get it corrected, and along the way, it's become clear that we just don't have a process in place for driving the timely disposition of basic constituent matters. I want to be clear and separate what I'm saying from the workaday customer service operation. I think Mr. Chamberlain and his team do an outstanding job managing standard customer service inquiries and needs. What I'm talking about are complex issues that wash ashore with board members because there's been a failure or breakdown at the school level, or more frequently, the central office. I'm not going to go into specifics tonight, but I've got a long litany of examples that lead me to believe we're not doing a good enough job being responsive in certain situations, and we need a process in place that causes us to be better as an organization. My thinking is to bring the resolution to the boardroom to initially surface ideas and conversations in a public and transparent way, and then perhaps I'd like to ask Ms. Brog to convene a governance committee meeting so that we can have more detailed discussions there. And along the way, I would like to compare our process for handling constituent matters with similarly situated institutions like mayor's office, the metro council, the legislature, and other large urban school systems. People don't think of it this way typically, but school board districts are roughly the size of state house legislative districts. Our constituents deserve every bit of the same courtesy and follow-through as they would get from a legislator or the mayor. And I'll say thank you to the board members in advance for your indulgence in the conversation. If we decide to organize a better process, I think it will make everyone's lives easier, especially the voters and taxpayers of Davidson County who we represent. Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Shepherd.
No.
You guys are easy tonight. Ms. Kim. Ms. Berry. Don't disappoint me.
I attended the April 29th plus probably Emerging Knowledge Forum, and everyone that I have attended, and so far I don't think I've missed many of them, have been most impressed with the presenters and the knowledge that I walked away with. This time, got to hear Tim Schreiber, who is the chairman of Cassel, and he shared brain research that suggests that emotion drives attention, and attention drives learning. And so, it speaks very highly to the fact that motivation is so important for student learning. And it also speaks very strongly that our teachers need to know their interest, the knowledge, and the background of their students in order for learning to occur. You know, we can try to fill students' heads with knowledge and test it, but that's not necessarily learning. Learning is integrating, and that's what we're looking for. The Teaching and Learning Committee meeting will be next Tuesday, April the 29th, at 12:00 noon, and the agenda will be coming through email.
Where's it going to be held?
Right, right, the other, yeah.
In the, okay.
Dr. Register and his staff will host four informational meetings for parents about Common Core and assessments used to measure those standards, and parents will have an opportunity to ask questions and make comments, and all the meetings will begin at 5:30. The meetings will help parents to learn more about and understand, number one, the standards, the curriculum, the various assessments, and questions and answers will be part of this. This will, the first one will occur on Thursday, the 24th, at Overton High School. Monday, the 28th, one will be at Gower. Thursday, May 1st, at Madison Middle School, and Wednesday, May 7th, at Apollo Middle School. And I want to thank Representative Sheila Butts and Senator Joey Hensley, and really the entire General Assembly, for their unanimous vote to bring not only transparency, but ease to parents as they attempt to understand the various state mandated assessments administered to our students. To build on my previous resolution on high stakes testing and our commitment to transparency, tonight I'm giving notice of a resolution I will bring to the next meeting on May 13th concerning high stakes testing. This resolution will call for the administration to reduce the overall number of tests, the time and cost allocated for district mandated tests, including predictive tests and classroom practice. It will seek to provide transparency concerning the types and description of district mandated tests, the purpose for using the test, and a testing calendar with the expectation that these will be posted on individual school websites. This resolution will also seek to provide transparency and incremental rights regarding high stakes testing and provide feedback to parents about test results. This concludes my meeting.
Thank you. Dr. Brandon?
And I have one or two, which is really odd for me. First of all, Happy Earth Day. Doesn't get the traction that it needs, but Happy Earth Day, as we become a more green society, I think it's picking up some steam. Also, on April 15th, I was honored to help present our own Dr. Jesse Register with the MNEA Individual Friends of Education Award at the annual retiree banquet. And I must say, it was a great honor to be able to help present that award, and you certainly deserve it, and we appreciate all the hard work you do for our district. April 19th, so much good news. The O. Charlie's organization is going through restructuring. They are in the process of renovating a lot of their stores, and we were blessed to have the store in Hickory Hollow renovated just recently. On Saturday, along with Mayor Dean, I attended the grand reopening of that store, and the new president, Mickey Mills, announced that they would be engaging in business partnerships with several high schools, starting with Antioch High School, in their culinary arts program, which, you know, we all had an opportunity to taste some of that food the other night. So the culinary arts program is going to, they're going to be doing some job shadowing, skills training. They will be onsite in the classroom with the students, so I think that's a great opportunity. And this is in their Academy of Hospitality at Antioch High School. One big thing, Pam Mappleton, who is our academy coach at Antioch High School, after 39 years is going to be retiring. So we're kicking and screaming right now, hoping she'll change her mind, but Mickey Mills, who is, again, the president of O. Charlie's, went above and beyond telling everybody who was there on Saturday how grateful they were for her services and how hard she's worked, and I can personally attest to that. So we wish her quite well at the end of this school year. Tonight, at Antioch High School, there is a presentation called a Walk Through Times. It's a co-presentation between Clockwise Productions and in association with the Nashville Opera. They will hold a performance featuring, performances featuring live theater entertainment, musical performances, poetry, food tastings, and more. And the event begins at 6:00 PM, so if you can go and support that, that would be fantastic. All of this apparently is about Antioch High School. Antioch High School will host the Middle Tennessee Middle School Track Invitational this week. The meet starts Thursday, April 24th, at 6:00 PM, and continues on Saturday, April 26th, at 9:30 AM. Antioch will be hosting teams from across Middle Tennessee, which include Wilson County, Williamson County, Rutherford County, Sumner County, and private schools, and eight to 10 MNPS middle schoolers. Admission is $5 for each day. I hope you can go and support not only the surrounding county schools, but also our own middle schools as well. One announcement that I also learned this week, and this does not have anything to do with Antioch Middle School, is, as you all know, we celebrated the graduating seniors at Elite Academy here recently. Was informed that those same students will be receiving a visit from former President Bill Clinton on Monday, who is going to be in town for the sole purpose of their senior signing day. And I think that's pretty fantastic. It's not open to the public, it is a private event just for these students, so kudos to them. I mean, it just continues apparently to get better for these kids. I'm trying to figure out how to sneak in, but so far, no luck. And I think, we actually, one other thing, we have a work session agenda that Ms. Boga will give out to all of you guys. It's through September, so we finally got it together, and we'll be giving it out to you guys soon. So other than that, I think I'm done with announcements, finally.
Thank you.
Yep, that's it. So, we will move ahead into discussions for tonight, and Dr. Register, I will turn it over to you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. It's good to have all of you here. We are, we have three items on the agenda, and we'll start with the short one first. Alan Coverstone has been asked to bring an update on charter school application process and timelines. So Alan, we'll turn it over to you.
It will be short. Good to see you all. I've just been asked to kind of step through and give you an update on where we are, what the timeline looks like, and what happens next in the review cycle. We have three teams that are hard at work, going through the rubrics and applying them to the written documents. These are, of course, as you know, binders of several hundred pages and attachments. They're going through those in great detail. They're headed for an interview day on May 27th, and I'll just kind of step you through the steps of the process, the questions that they'll be answering at each step of the process, quick timeline, and then with any luck, I'll be out of your hair. The first, first thing I want to do is just remind you of the four steps in the process. We begin with a, what we call the capacity evaluation, and this is kind of the core of what originally was a state-acquired application. This is essentially getting to the questions associated with the organization's ability to deliver on its promises, to identify plans and carry those plans out as a strong organization. Phase two, then, will be our look at the absolute priorities, which are the ability to increase academic achievement in the district, particularly for students who have previously struggled, and diversity management in line with our diversity plan and the expectations that we have associated with that. In both cases, we expect excellence and diversity, and so this phase of the process will evaluate the applications strictly on those components, building on the capacity evaluation at the first phase. Third phase is where we plug in the board's articulated priorities and evaluate the ability for the organizations and their plans to meet and advance the goals that you've articulated. And in phase four, we pull that together into a recommendation report, which we'll then bring to you. To give you just a little bit clearer understanding of how the committee relates to each of these, I've essentially identified some clarifying questions that will be the questions at each step of the process that the committee will provide answers to in building the report. And so, for example, in the capacity evaluation, we ask the committee to give us an answer to and evidence of whether the school's plan meets high educational plan standards, high operational plan standards, and high financial plan standards. And then, in total, does the school plan meet overall capacity standards, which are associated with the evaluative rubric and the investigations and evidence that they gather from the application and the interviews together? And then finally, is the school plan likely to produce a strong and sustainable organization? That's what we're really after. We're not just interested in applications that can get to the end of the process and clear the hurdles. We're looking for organizations that will be with us for 20, 40, 60 years, delivering high-quality education that whole time. And it's that high bar that I think sets us apart. Phase two, then, the absolute priorities. The committee will be answering the specific questions. Is the school likely to advance the academic performance of the district and increase educational opportunities for the students it serves? And then on the diversity component, is the school likely to advance diversity management goals in the district's diversity management plan? So it's completely aligned with that. We'll evaluate transportation, location, marketing, priorities in terms of enrollment, areas served, and so on, and all of those things will come together in answering that question from the perspective of the committees that are doing this work. Phase three, then, is where we introduce the needs-based priorities that you've articulated. So specifically, does the school's plan for the board articulated need for elementary school capacity in the Overton and Glencliff clusters, does the school's plan serve that priority? Second, does the school's plan serve the board articulated needs for management conversion of target schools? And then thirdly, does the school plan offer a high school pathway from current operator of a successful middle school, those being the priorities that were articulated in the resolution that y'all passed earlier? And again, appreciate your articulating those. That helps us to put a much finer point on needs-based decision-making as we make recommendations to you coming down the stretch. And then finally, phase four, new investment recommendations. Taking all of those conclusions, one by one, into account, we'll answer the big question. Does the school plan serve the best interests of the students, the district, and the community? And that will inform our recommendation to you. Obviously, a yes there, we would recommend that you adopt the school, support the school. A no there, we would recommend that you deny the school. And all of that will happen at the end of the process. On the last page of your packet and up here, you see basically an outline of how this proceeds. About half the time that we're allowed, we're allowed 90 days to conduct this evaluation by law, about half that time is devoted to the initial capacity work, because there's a lot of detail and digging that has to happen during that time, and a lot, and most of the evidence that really informs the other decisions comes out of that part of the process. We are anticipating that that will culminate shortly after the interview day on May 27th. That will lead the committees then to produce reports for us, which will build the overall report that we're after. And we will move into a much more careful review of absolute priorities, diversity, and academic achievement. We will then move to the competitive priority reviews, and that's where we will also engage not just the committee, but student assignment and some of the other departments around here that will help us to pass good judgment on what the ability of the plan is to serve the needs that you've articulated. And then finally, we'll prepare our report beginning around the 70th, 70th or 75th day, somewhere in that timeframe. We'll try to do that as early as we can so that you can have the recommendations to review as early as possible, and then we will ask for special action on the 90th day, if possible, so that we don't cross that threshold. With that, that's my highlight, that's my update. Happy to answer questions. I'm also happy to let you get on to other work if that's your preference.
Alan, you act like we just don't want to talk to you. We love you. Any questions on the review cycle and the process, Ms. Berry?
Yes, I'm a little confused. We have focused, verbalized our needs for new charter schools with a priority that we stipulated. And it looks like this isn't even considered until phase three. My question is, why would we wait till phase three? If this is important, why wouldn't that be, number one? And then look at, you know, phase two, and all of those questions are important things to consider, but if they're not even meeting criteria that we've established, why continue?
Right. Well, first of all, they're not separable. It's a sequential process. Second of all, we've considered needs in the past, and it is, we think, a lot easier and better to consider the capabilities of the organization and then the needs separately, because what we do is we get into kind of a circle, like, do we need it? Can they do it? Do we need it? Can they do it? And we have separated that this year to give clarity to that, so that we'll give you clearer answers to those questions, so that our members of the committee don't confuse the ability to do one thing with the ability to do the other, and that we can lay out the evidence more specifically. Secondly, you know, the bulk of what you're doing here is evaluating the capacity of the organization to do what it says it's going to do. That's been the biggest reason that we've recommended denial of applications in the past. And for us to toss out on the assumption that what they've set out to do or said to do is not within the category of the plausible is really not something that we can legally do just off the top. We certainly can articulate priorities and make decisions that are associated with the needs that we've articulated, but we have to still give the application its full consideration in the possibility that it serves those needs in some way that we had not otherwise thought of. So it's a full and fair consideration for all of them. All of the applications get reviewed to the point of interview, and what we're doing in those, at that point in the process, is evaluating whether their plan also meets a need that we've articulated, so that we can recommend to you a positive return on investment relative to the goals that you want us to accomplish.
Thank you.
So it's not separate, it's for clarity.
Yeah. Any other questions? Mr. Hayes?
What day is the 90th day?
August 8th.
August 8th. So it would be the day after the election.
That's correct.
Would we have a specially called meeting?
We would need a specially called meeting.
We would have to, we would have to schedule one.
Well, would we, I guess where I'm going is that certain members of this board were faced with a difficult decision a year and a half ago, a couple of days in, right? It would be nice, to the extent that there is, that people want to have thoughtful conversation around the charter applications, to maybe not have the vote on the 90th day. I don't know how people feel about that, but on the 87th or 88th, so that if, oh, you know what, we want to talk about it for another day, you could.
You're saying have the conversations and then schedule the vote on the 8th? I'm not, I'm not probably.
Sometime.
Just sometime prior to, before actually taking those scheduled conversations.
There could be three or four. There could be just one new person here.
Well, Mr. Hayes, I'm telling you, there's only going to be one new person on this board.
That could certainly be the case.
I'm just going to go ahead and claim that right now.
I know you're really excited about a fun summer campaigning.
Yes. But we won't talk about that.
But again, it would be nice, even for the one new person.
Well, and I understand, because even regardless of what the makeup of the board will be after August 7th, at least that information would be out there to review. Gotcha, okay.
And I think the other part around that as well is, I would hate to defer to the 11th hour, so that if there were extended conversations, we weren't feeling a sense of urgency that it has to be approved on this night on the 90th day.
Well, and Mr. Coverstone, correct me if I'm incorrect here, but once you make a decision, well, once your office has a recommendation, you'll send that, those applications electronically to board members, correct?
Right. Part of the reason that we really don't feel comfortable rushing it all the way to your other board meeting is that that really is going to push us up to not giving you a lot of time to review it.
Right.
Our hope is that shortly after that previous board meeting, we'll be able to deliver the recommendations to you. That's certainly our plan.
Okay. So somewhere after August 1st, we're looking at having those applications sent to board members for review.
I think it'd be before that.
Okay.
So the board schedule, you've got a meeting scheduled on the 12th of August, and then a business meeting on the 8th of July. So where I'm going is, do we want to talk about, and this doesn't have to be decided this evening, a specially called board meeting maybe around the 1st or the 2nd or 3rd or sometime in early, early August, if there's a little bit of time to review the recommendations? I know, I don't want to rush your committee.
Well, yeah, let's review this and talk about it.
Think about that.
Yeah.
To the extent you're working on 87th, please.
So Alan and I have had a conversation about the timelines, and pushing it up, trying to push it up very much at all, is real problematic, because of the, we want to have a thorough process. You know, I think we could be responsive to a few days there, but I, but I wouldn't want to, you know, I wouldn't want to cut it shorter than that, and Alan, I don't want to speak for you, but for members of the board, if they felt like it were appropriate to do it a few days, a few days earlier, I assume we could do that. Or if they want to, what we decided to do was push it all the way to the 90th day, that's the last day that we can do it. And it does come after the election.
You said it was the, what day is the 90th day?
The 8th.
Which is a Friday.
Right.
Yeah.
And just, you know, to speak, I mean, we've thought about this a lot, and we do have a window, but it just doesn't get all the way to the previous board meeting or extend all the way to the other. And, you know, so traditionally, we've kind of aimed for that board work session, but here, we're just trying to put it up there. But we're open to your pleasure within that window where we can still give it a good...
One of the things that I'll say is, this is too important a process to rush anything on. We have had several discussions around charter applications and charter schools, and the last thing we need to do is rush any kind of review process or approval process that could come back to haunt us. So, yeah, I agree. We need to, go ahead.
And I also think about what happened with our capital needs committee this winter, where we had to have a specially called meeting on January 30th to meet a deadline.
Yes.
It would be nice to not have that happen to this body again.
Well, we'll put it up for discussion. When is our next meeting? Yeah, we'll talk about it. We have time right now to talk about it, to all sort of think about it a little bit more, and bring it maybe to the business meeting on, in May, and let's talk about it in more details then. Is that it? Any other questions? Comments? Ms. Kim?
Alan, yes. Could you say a little bit more about the management conversions and what you're thinking, and if you have a, or is there going to be more information that comes in later?
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes. I heard most of what you said, I just missed one word, but it felt like it was an important one.
Really?
Because it was one of the words you said.
Yeah, I was just curious about management conversions and if you have an early read or how you're just thinking about it generally.
Well, I mean, we have, you know, a couple of applicants who are going after that, and, you know, to Ms. Berry's question as well, I mean, being able subsequently then, not only to evaluate their capacity, but their plan for converting a school and what that would involve in terms of management timelines, et cetera, we will give that some real earnest attention in that phase that's at that part of the calendar. You know, my, I'm not sure what predictions you're after, it will depend on the quality of the applications and the likelihood that the plan could be successful, but I think we're certainly anticipating that there will be some capacity and that we will move in that direction.
Got it. You just answered the question.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have what I'm looking forward to, a very productive conversation about our TEL survey, TEL Tennessee. Susan Thompson and Shannon Black, and we have, yes, and I would suggest that you come up to the middle table, and you're welcome, if you're going to work the computer, you're welcome to work it from there, but I'll turn it over to Susan and let her introduce the survey. Let me tee it up just a little bit for the, for the audience, if I may. We made a decision last year to, as a district, to conduct the teacher survey. This is a teacher survey on school climate and culture and so forth on an annual basis. The state does that every other year, but we felt like it was really important information for us to hear student voice, I mean, hear teacher voice, I'm sorry, to hear what teachers are saying by individual schools, and so we made a decision to do it on an annual basis. And as a, as a school administrator, the way I look at it is, we want to be able to measure trends. What happens? What happens from one year to the next? What happens when we have change in leadership? And are we making progress? You know, are we, how are we doing with our, how are we doing with our teachers? So I don't think there's statewide data available this year, because the rest of the state didn't do it. There may have been some other districts that did it on an individual basis, but I know that we did. And I also want to say that I think this is very timely information for us tonight because of the concerns that have been raised among teachers about testing, and particularly teacher evaluation and teacher accountability tied to test scores and the transition to Common Core, many of the issues that we've discussed on a regular basis. So I'm glad to have asked Susan to give a report, and we're very fortunate to have a special guest with us tonight to help us with that, and I'll let Susan and Shannon hold forth from here and introduce our special guest.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We're very excited. This is extremely fresh data. We just had it released with...
Could you use the mic, please? Those two there are for the cameras. That one is for the audience, yes.
I think it's on. Can you hear me better now?
I think it is. I think it is.
There you go. That's good. Does that work?
Great.
Okay.
So what I was saying, this data is very, very new. We just had it released last week and had a chance to look at it. I will also tell you, we've had five different training sessions. We've had 31 district staff and 43 school staff go through the training with the people from the TEL survey, from the New Teacher Center. So they'll further understand it. So that's really great news for us. What we wanted to do is to bring that to you and what I pulled forward was to look at, does this look familiar? Our Education 2018. And I want to tell you what TEL stands for. I want you to listen to see if you hear any common words that might be found in this. TEL stands for Teaching, Empowering, Leading, and Learning. TEL, survey results. So you can see it's very deeply embedded in our strategic plan and that kind of data. So we've had, like I said, the people from the New Teacher Center come in and work with our staff members in helping them understand what this means and what we can do with it. We're going to, I'm going to turn this over in just a second to Eric Hirsch, who's here on my right, your left, to let him go into it deeper. Eric is one of the developers of the TEL survey. He comes to us as the Chief External Affairs Officer at the New Teacher Center. His main responsibilities are around looking at policy, communication, and the organization of communicating the TEL information. It's all about helping us to retain teachers and how to recruit teachers, how to look at teacher and leader effectiveness and those types of things. He is going to tell us why we do it. He's going to tell us what we found in doing it and we'll share then what we're planning to do with that information. So I'm going to turn it over to Eric and he has a slide presentation that will back up the brief, research brief that you were given and then go deeper into our information.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me here. I very much appreciate it. And I'll leave it to you, Madam Chairwoman, how you would like questions to kind of go in.
We're pretty informal doing work during work sessions, so we just ought to wing it.
Fantastic. So interrupt away. I can use a lot of statistical terms like smushing questions together and these types of things. So if you need any clarification, just let me know. I am the Chief External Affairs Officer at the New Teacher Center, which makes me sound like a press guy, but I'm not. I'm in charge of our research. I'm in charge of our policy. And I happen to be the person sitting in the right place at the right time in 2002 in North Carolina when everybody else worked for the state and they said, wait, here's a nonprofit guy who's not vested in the results. He can work with other states when they call. And that was a long time ago. I was much taller, less gray, et cetera. Because you know how much I care about teaching and working conditions, know the New Teacher Center is actually a fairly large nonprofit based in California. We're about a $30 million nonprofit of about 175 staff, work mostly with larger urban districts providing new teacher and new principal inductions for. But I'm smart enough to work 3,000 miles away from my colleagues and my boss in Durham, North Carolina. Those are good teaching conditions and working conditions if you can get them. Okay? So we have always appreciated our partnership with MMPS and the foresight that the district has had to try to utilize this survey as an annual measure. We started our journey together in 2011, funded by the state of Tennessee as part of First to the Top, because TEL Tennessee was written in to be conducted biannually, so not biannually, biannually, every other year, because as you can imagine, it's really, really hard to survey roughly 50,000 people at once. That said, we're live in Texas right now, so I am getting a feel for surveying 420,000 people at once as we speak. We started here in 2011, but we had heard from Dr. Register and many of the great office, central office staff you have here, that we wanted data more frequently so that it could be better integrated into school improvement planning and trying to ensure that all teachers, particularly as the state rolls out a new evaluation system and tries to measure effectively different, effectiveness differently, that teachers were put in school contexts that would give them the best opportunity to be effective. Does not guarantee their success if they have positive or negative conditions, but I'm going to show you some research as to why we do this, because school context does matter. Ultimately, the supports teachers receive in a school make a difference for how effectively they can do their work with kids. Okay? So I'm going to go through a little of that research, talk about some of the results we've seen historically in MMPS as well as now, and then just make sure you understand how and where to access this data and talk about some next steps. Okay? So again, have, this was our fourth iteration. We've been around the block. We've been doing this survey for about a decade. We have gathered more than a million survey responses. We've surveyed actually about 1.6 million educators in 15 states and 27 districts since the survey has been at NTC in 2007. Another interesting thing for us was we were part of, and I'm going to show you a slide in a second, of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation-funded Measures of Effective Teaching. Actually, our first work in Tennessee happened in Memphis, which was one of seven districts participating in the Measures of Effective Teaching initiative. That allowed us to go through an external validation of our survey. So often when you hear about surveys, is it valid? Is it reliable? The answer is yes, and I'm happy to provide you a 150-page report, or I can summarize it by saying, trust us.
We'll take the summary. Thank you.
That's it. We assess nine constructs as part of this survey, things about the school context that we believe research has shown make a difference for how effective teachers can be. And I want to be clear, the unit of analysis we're looking at is the school, not individuals within the school. And all of our questions in these constructs are about teachers, not you, not you and your best friend, not every teacher. And we defined this on the survey as teachers being a majority of teachers in the building. Same when we talk about school leadership. We're not just talking about the principal. We're talking about any group, individual group or team that makes fundamental decisions about the direction of the school. And we ask questions about time, facilities and resources, community support and involvement, managing student conduct, teacher leadership, school leadership, professional development, instructional supports and practices. We also ask your 1,400 teachers in their first three years about the induction and mentoring support that they receive. What do we know and why is it worth your investment to survey every other year in addition to what the state has provided? Three things that we've learned over 10 years. Can't boil it down to three things you're in trouble. Okay? One is, this really does make a difference for kids. As we talk about student learning, as we talk about TBOSS scores, as we talk about even beyond TBOSS scores into the social emotional learning of students, the climate, the context in which teachers work can accelerate the work they do with children to help them learn. Number two, ultimately, these things matter for retention. You are investing so much in human capital and trying to keep your most effective teachers. I'll show you some data from 2014 that shows you teachers, if they are not in positive conditions, they will leave in search of them. And finally, the last piece, why it's worth surveying upwards of almost 5,000 people here, well, beyond 5,000, and we heard from 4,600, is because perception matters and where you sit in an organization, an organization or a building shapes how you view the world. So ultimately, creating that mirror for the whole faculty to see to say, what do we think? How do we look? I may think we look great. You may think we have some work to do, but ultimately, can we look at a reflection together and utilize this to try to create the context that best serve teachers and their ability to get kids to learn? Okay? So the first part, it mattering for kids. Let me hit two studies and then go to that first one because it relates to some other efforts you're doing in MMPS around gathering student perception data as well. Okay? A recent study that just came out from two researchers at Brown, not a bad school, in a peer-reviewed journal article, looked at a decade of research from our survey in Charlotte Mecklenburg School District, now our second largest district, used to be our largest in North Carolina, and a decade worth of value-added gain scores. What they found, and what they did is they mushed, there's that statistical term, 24 of the same questions we asked on the TEL MMPS survey together into a single teaching conditions construct. Okay? What they found is over a decade, teachers in schools that were at the 75th percentile or above accelerated and improved their own effectiveness in getting student gains 38% more than equivalent teachers who have been in schools at the 25th percentile or below. Again, what it's saying is school context matters. After two years, 11% more effective. So ultimately, they're saying teacher effectiveness is influenced by the conditions and support in the school. We have other research from North Carolina and Massachusetts using the same data that showed that roughly 10 to 15% in aggregate school level achievement can be explained by the presence of teaching conditions in the school. Okay? Most recently, I've been working with Ron Ferguson, who I met as part of the Measures of Effective Teaching, who administers the tripod survey that I know you give to students here in MMPS. And what we've tried to do is look at the connection between what kids say and how they perceive their teacher and their classroom environment, what teachers and principals and educators say about the school environment, and look at value-added game scores and how all those pieces fit together. The theoretical model for a chapter that's coming out in an edited volume on June 30th of this year is in front of you. And I want to call your attention to box A and B because that's the stuff we're assessing under the TEL MMPS survey. What you can see here is some of the same areas we're going to talk about in a second. Facilities, teacher leadership, some of the PD activities teachers participate in, and instructional supports are all base level working conditions. These are critical and we correlated them with what we call in box B, teacher enablers. Right? Picture these conditions that we're assessing on TEL MMPS as the ones that are the real catalysts towards driving the outcomes you see in box C, D, and E. The outcomes in box C are how teachers actually act in their school. If they don't trust their colleagues, if they don't feel supported, they're not going to participate in professional learning communities. Right? That's box C. Box D, which is how kids perceive their teachers, the tripod results, all the seven Cs that you all see annually from the tripod survey. And finally, box C, which is the value-added game scores that we knew from the Measures of Effective Teaching. Those four catalysts we're going to talk about throughout your data. School, effective school-level conduct management. So having policies that are clearly understood by the kids, by the parents, by the faculty, and they are consistently administered by administrators and teachers. Key. Secondly, effective PD. Two questions in particular that we ask about professional development, I'm going to show you your results on in a minute. Did professional development make a difference according to teachers in changing their own practice? And do they perceive it makes a difference for their ability to get student learning gains? Those two questions, questions you're doing fantastic on. Okay? Thirdly, whether teachers have ample autonomy and are empowered in their school. And finally, manageable demands on time. We're going to talk about the time teachers have to plan, to collaborate, and to provide quality instruction. Those are the enablers. We have found, and you can see those direct arrows, how you do on those is directly and significantly connected to value-added gains of kids, what kids say about teachers on the tripod, and how teachers act and participate with their colleagues in the school. If you don't want to believe that, look at our TBOSS results here in Tennessee. So we've done state reports now in 2012 and 2014 for the Tennessee Education Agency, okay, Department of Ed. And what we found is, in particular, community support involvement, TBOSS scores were greater and significantly so while controlling for student, teacher, and school characteristics in schools where those were positively rated on this survey. Okay? So looking at community support, we also found, again, that managing student conduct that we just talked about, as well as teacher leadership and empowerment, made a difference particularly at the elementary and middle school level here in Tennessee. Okay? So TBOSS score is significantly connected to whether teachers report these conditions are in place in schools. Okay? Go back to that second finding about keeping effective teachers. What I have here are your 2014 survey results. And again, the survey was just taken this spring. And I, what we did is we divided up the educators and the teachers, actually, this is a teachers only, into some categories based on what they told us their future employment plans were. So what you see on the left are a group we call stayers. These are MMPS teachers who said, I want to stay in my school into the foreseeable future. This is where I want to be. Okay? The second column is a super important column, particularly for human capital. Okay? These are people who want to stay teaching, but not in their current building. They said, I want to teach in another MMPS school, or I want to leave the district altogether, but I want to keep teaching. Okay? The third and the fourth category are a little more mixed. Okay? The third category, leave the classroom, are people who may be in great conditions, but they want to become an administrator. They want to do something else in education. Okay? So they may be in great conditions, they may not. They want to leave teaching but stay in education. Then that last column are people who say, I want to leave education altogether. Those are some new teachers who say, this isn't for me, but these are also retirees who may have been working in great schools. So I want you to pay attention to that first column of stayers and that second column of movers. Okay? With me so far?
Yeah. I think we've got questions now.
Yep, you bet. So what's in the box are the percentage of those people who agreed or strongly agreed that the teaching condition on the left is in place. So for example, what we see is that four out of five people who want to stay in their school, 81.3%, agree that there is an atmosphere of trust and mutual respect in their school. Okay? Movers, less than a third. 32.9% of those who say, I want out of here, but I want to stay teaching. I just don't want to teach here, only less than a third, 32.9, right? Round it up, it's a third, say that's present in their school. So again, stayers are two and a half times more likely to report that there is an atmosphere of trust and mutual respect in their school. Okay? They're more than twice as likely to say that school leadership consistently supports teachers. They're more than twice as likely to say that teachers feel comfortable raising issues. If you look at those questions that have the greatest difference between teachers who say, I want to keep teaching in the school, and teachers who say, I want to teach somewhere else, they're predominantly about school leadership and empowerment and decision-making within the school. Okay? Want to keep your effective teachers, keep an eye out for those leadership aspects that we document in the survey. Okay? Does that help, sir?
Try.
Give me some more.
I'd love to see the mean data behind this. So the note, if you could just follow up with us with, so how, you know, how many people said they wanted to stay?
Sure.
Is there data behind this chart?
Oh, absolutely.
That'd be great to see the...
You bet.
We probably have that, or we all have that. We do.
Pull it up on the website. I just don't have it in my printout in front of me.
Yeah, publicly available.
You bet. And I'll show you how to access that.
Access to it.
And one of the good things is when you go onto the website, you can pull up the district results. If you mouse over charts that look like this, that I'll show you how to access at the end, it actually says the raw number as well, so the percent's there, but if you keep your mouse on it, it will give you the N, the actual number.
Does this also, does this data also include the number of people taking the survey versus the number of employees in the district?
So what this incorporates is, we heard from 4,912 MMPS educators. We heard of that group, almost 4,500 of them were teachers. At the end of the survey, after teachers have already told us about their conditions across the eight constructs we asked of all educators, we said, what are your future employment plans? Do you want to stay in this school? Do you want to move to another school? Do you, in MMPS, do you want to move to another school in Tennessee, et cetera? And then what we did is we just sliced the data so you could see it here, right? And compared that group of stayers for which, and again, this is another tremendous positive. The story here is a positive story. A, beyond a supermajority of educators in this district want to remain teaching in their school and more than four out of five educators report that their school is a good place to work and learn. Okay?
And this is currently on the website?
Yes.
Can I?
Please.
Ms. Berry?
Uh, yes. Before we go on, I have a question still about the movers. Yes, before we go on, I have a question still about the movers. This speaks strongly to school leadership. How many schools are we talking about? Elementary, middle, high school?
So it is a full population survey. 151 of the district's 155 schools exceeded the 50% threshold that would allow us to feel comfortable that the results were representative of the faculty and that we would not compromise the anonymity of anyone who takes a survey because it's an anonymous survey. So it was offered to everyone. And again, the data that we are showing you is school by school for 151 of the 155 schools.
So with the elementary school, it was an 82% response rate for teachers. At the middle school, it was 74% response rate for teachers. And at the high school, it was 78%.
I'm not saying it correctly.
Okay.
I'm interested in knowing how many schools, not so much how many teachers, but how many schools. I suspect that this is point very clearly to particular schools that maybe the leadership is lacking for a large percentage of people. Is that...
So what I'll show you as we move right into how you can access the data, so I'm going to show you a scatter plot of your schools and whether they are above or below average. So you'll see that there is variation across schools. But I would like to say a couple of words before I hand over the microphone, which is, number one, I want to say something I had said before, which is the unit of analysis of this survey is the school. And we are assessing schools, which are a combination, an organization of individuals. While, for example, a principal holds a sacred role in setting the culture and tone in the building, they are not solely responsible for these conditions, and will take a full community to address and improve them. So we are going to look, and there are going to be schools that we recommend need some help in processing and utilizing this data through their school improvement piece. And there are going to be schools that are not going to add the park so greatly that you probably have the capacity and the learning about how teachers and administrators and a whole faculty can come together to create these contexts right here in this district.
I think that probably answered your question, but I just was going to point you to some of the questions here. It's about group decisions. It's about, do they feel like they have influence on decision-making? What kind of leadership opportunities do they have? What is leadership altogether? What does that look like on their school? So it's not person-specific. It's about the component of leadership, and you'll see empowerment, and how do they feel empowered to do those types of things.
Where on the website is this?
So the website for the initiative is, and again, I will show it up here, is www.telmnps... pardon my New England accent. I do my best. I've lived in North Carolina for a long time now, but I was born in Maine. It still comes through no matter how much I try. This is why I talk fast as well, okay? TellMnPS.org.
And it's on slide 16.
Okay. I think maybe some people might be as confused as I was. When you said it's on the website, I'm looking at the mmps.org website. Is it on here too? Or is it just on this Tell MMPS?
It is on the Tell MMPS website, and we can certainly work with the district as desired to create a link from the main webpage over to ours.
That would be fabulous. Thank you so much.
You bet. Any other questions? Actually, it's great that you pointed me to this slide because now I'm actually going to talk about individuals for just a second.
May I ask one more question before we go on? Are the questions that are before us on page seven, is that comprehensive? Is it all of the questions that teachers, or is this just a...
These are the questions with the greatest disparity between stayers and movers. The survey across the eight constructs are roughly eight to 15 questions in each construct, and it takes educators on average about 20 to 25 minutes to complete. So it's pretty thorough. I'm also going to show you agreement rates on the survey. But as per some of the conversation, and I think you teed this up very well, in the time section, we actually asked teachers how they spend their time in an average week. And there are three questions about teacher, about test preparation, about utilizing assessment results, et cetera. So there's a host of data, as you start to unpack this, that you can learn about schools that you serve and schools across the district.
And how is this different than the Tell survey that is given every, the state Tell Tennessee? Is it exactly the same survey that teachers take every other year?
It is virtually identical. The difference is MMPS contracted with us just to administer. So for example, thank you to the Tennessee Department of Education and First to the Top for helping us with all the training we did last week and for me being here today. And so MMPS, in the off-years, chooses, because Dr. Register and the district saw some of this research, saw the importance, and understood how contexts can make a difference, MMPS wanted more data quicker in order to really try to provide some of the supports to enable teachers to thrive. So that's why MMPS is quite unique in this. We've been working with Oak Ridge, all nine schools in Oak Ridge, in the off-year as well. It's a little easier to wrap your head around, and the survey's open now. But mostly, this has been unique to MMPS, and again, I think due to the foresight and the commitment of the district and how well it aligns with Education 2018 goals. Last piece about the importance of this and why gathering the metric here has been important is, again, that last finding, where you sit shapes how you view the world. So I want to talk about those 89 principals for a second, okay? What you see here is the 89 principals all mushed together and their agreement rates, and the roughly 4,500 teachers who took the survey. And what I did is pulled the questions in which teachers and principals are the least likely to view the world the same, okay? So on every, virtually every question on the survey, principals were more positive that conditions were in place in schools than teachers, okay? So what you see here, for example, is 100% every one of the 89 principals who filled out this survey agree or strongly agree that teachers are assigned classes that maximize their likelihood of success with students. Now, MMPS needs to be congratulated because seven out of 10 teachers agreeing with that statement is phenomenal and much better than many districts of similar size and demographics than we've seen. So I don't want to lose in the 100 versus 70% comparison the positive nature of all respondents to these questions. But as you can imagine, as you start to think about school improvement planning, and unless those decision-making processes are clear and in place in a school, principals may not be seeing the same things as the rest of the faculty, which is why holding up this data is really important. Because as you can see here, time issues in particular, and some of the managing student conduct issues, those same two areas that I just said were those teacher enablers in box B, two out of the four are sitting right up there that have the greatest disparity in how principals and teachers view the world, right?
And I think because perceptions are realities to people, I just think this is such a great opportunity to build teacher leaderships in buildings, to build up the school leadership teams, and just have real collaborative conversations around celebrations, about root causes, about areas of improvement. So I see this as a real opportunity.
Thank you. And so absolutely, you can imagine the conversation about what is sufficient in terms of non-instructional time, which is defined scientifically as time without a kid in front of your face, so that you can either plan, collaborate, or something else happens, okay? So as you think about the time teachers have where they could learn from each other, right? Is this sufficient, right? Is it enough? And you have here a third, over a third of teachers saying, "No, it's not sufficient." Yet we have more than nine out of 10 principals. So just coming together with data from the school, and really, and this is where our tools come in, and some of the great training that went on comes in, to say, "Let's talk about what is sufficient, but what's also reasonable," right? During the day, and knowing that our primary job is to provide high-quality instruction, and we don't want to sacrifice instructional time to do this, okay?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm concerned and a little bit confused in terms of, on slide seven, we got delineated by stayers and movers, but we're not doing that on eight. Is there a reason?
Sure. So I'm just trying to cut and slice and dice, more statistical terms for you, the data in different ways to accelerate our learning. What I really encourage all of you to do is to look at schools you know well, you see, you hear, you feel, you're in touch with the students and faculty, schools that are in your areas, okay? You have your own perceptions, I'm sure, about whether some of these conditions are in place. What you now have is the reflection of the views of those who work there every single day in terms of licensed staff. So I encourage you to think about this first and foremost at the school level. What I am about to share with you is some phenomenal results, really strong results, because MMPS has improved since 2013 on every single question on the Tell MMPS survey. That's why I spent so long telling you that this was important, because now that you start to see some of these improvements, I think you'll understand the rationale as to why this is hopefully going to be such a positive and a catalyst for getting the best out of the faculty in those schools.
Very brief observation. I think the training that you've done is so important because what we really want to create are those constructive conversations on each individual faculty with faculty and leaders in those schools. That's where you really get to what I think you're talking about. And what's important to me and the reason why I really wanted to do this on a manual basis is to track the trends. What happens when you change principals? What happens when you have a turnaround strategy in a school? And to be able to look at that and change from year to year. And I think your training was really to help people understand how to constructively use this at the school level. Is that correct?
You bet, Dr. Register. And so what I'm, what I'm trying to do is then say, well, the best part about hearing from 4,600 people is that's a lot of educators. And again, start not only lauding some of the results, but the effort it takes. And we know time is a huge constraint for educators because we can see it on the survey. We wanted to be able to disaggregate the data between stayers and movers, principals and teachers, so we could better learn about the views of some of these different groups. So that's why I tried to present those so you could see, okay, if teachers and principals view the world differently, what impact might this have on school improvement planning and the ability of the faculty to come together? In looking at the difference between stayers and movers, it helps to illuminate some of the things that maybe if they were in place would be, maybe could help keep those movers into the school. But the real piece of data that I hope you'll embrace, and again, we'll show you the links, is looking at those schools that you know best and looking at, are your perceptions similar to those in the school, right? Because just as we said here with principals and teachers, where you sit shapes how you view the world. And the key is talking about these perceptions, coming together, identifying root causes, and really making sure that together, the faculty owns and works on a school improvement plan that improves these conditions in order to catalyze the fact that...
And I have a question too. One quick question. I notice I'm on the website, I noticed there are maybe three or four schools that don't have any reports out here. Is there a reason for that?
You bet.
I'm sorry, I'm probably jumping all over the place.
Oh, no, please.
No, he mentioned it.
We're here for you. 150, you bet.
150 didn't have enough respondents for them to have enough value to add to the data. So when the question was asked, how many schools responded? Of the 155, I believe we took 151, and four were outliers because there wasn't enough, a large enough N for to carry weight.
Ms. Gentry, I would like to hire you and perhaps offer you a grade evaluation of an A because that was phenomenal.
There was only one school that did not participate, and then two of those four had the participation rate, but they didn't have five teachers. So we wouldn't want to, we wanted to be anonymous, we wouldn't want...
Keep it from the private.
And the other school was just slightly under the 50%.
Right. And again, I don't read too much into that school per se. I think that's a worthy conversation, but I wouldn't presume either positive or malintend or anything. It is a hard thing to administer. We actually merge an anonymous access code with a letter from Dr. Register that we then get to principals and hand out. Just the logistics of doing that is fairly complex. And then making sure educators have the time, right, to do this can be a challenge. So I think there are a variety of reasons why educators may or may not have responded to the survey during the time period in which it was offered.
I think one of them is probably the biggest part of it is trust. Because, you know, people can tell you all the time that the survey you're taking is anonymous, but unless you know for sure 100% that what you put down is not going to be counted against you, you know, we take surveys at my day job all the time. And what's really interesting is that sometimes you'll get an email that says, "This is totally anonymous, but we're going to give you the survey results, but we're going to disaggregate the data down to each department." And so if you are in a department that only has three people, you kind of know who said what.
Let alone it came to your email.
Exactly.
So if you link to the survey through your email, technically, so this is the difference between anonymity, okay, and keeping things confidential. We truly create access codes that we have no idea who gets which at the school level, which is why we do this via paper and do a merge with the letter and give them access to the site. So I think you're right. The good part is, this is our fourth iteration, as far as we can tell. This is, it has been, this district has been amazingly responsible with the data and using it for its intended purpose, which is a formative data tool to drive school improvement planning and really ensure that educators have the supports they need to do their best work. And so with that, hopefully, teachers will continue to feel comfortable giving us their 20 to 25 minutes that we know. For teachers, that doesn't sound like much. It's sacred and hard to find.
Sure. Ms. Shepherd had some questions.
Yes, I did take a little bit of time today to access the website, and I noticed that each school had three reports that you could access. And then on at least a couple of those reports, it gave results from 2013 and 2014 results that we just got. And you stated that you had been doing this since 2011. So I'm wondering if you ever go back and look at the older results to see if there's a trend up or down over, you know, more than just one year.
Can you come and work with us as we bring Ms. Gentry on as well?
Stop trying to take my school.
Well, I just heard during the first session, there's an election, and I know there's so much time for you all to be working. It's a phenomenal question, and that's something we have been working with Central Office on and can do. One of our worries, and there's actually quite a bit of research and writing about this, is big data. How much data is too much so that we've in fact overwhelmed educators with too much? I know how much this district, human capital in particular, federal programs, and how much you've all invested in trying to create dashboards so that educators can process a multitude of student characteristics. And you've done so much and you're invested in so much between the tripod survey, between our survey at school level. So what we wanted to do is just say, you know what? How about let's just pick the most previous point in time? We could easily work with the district to create a rolling three-year average. We could present this in a variety of ways, and we have certainly been working with the district to think through what data is most valuable for you for its intended purpose, which is how can you help schools that we can tell from the data may need some help? If there's not trust and teachers don't feel comfortable raising concerns, two questions on the survey, we can assume if we give them tools that they will use them to build a house. We can assume they will use them to bludgeon each other, correct? And which schools can we learn from who have phenomenal teaching conditions in the district? So that's where we didn't want to overwhelm.
Okay. Well, actually, I think my second question kind of blends itself to the first one in that. I didn't see any data around teacher mobility. So that could really impact from one year to the next if you have a lot of new teachers or a lot of tenured teachers or, you know, one side or the other would really kind of skew those results, I would think.
You bet. Let me give a quick answer and get back. This is part of why we assess the school as our unit. And we understand that there are some catalysts that can really make significant differences in conditions, although they remain fairly stable over time. A new principal, a host of teacher retirements can move the needle. And as you think about some of the smaller schools in MMPS, this is why, again, we've been so impressed with how the district has utilized the data. Moving from 73 to 78%... Moving from 73% to 78% could be the result of one teacher leaving if it's a small elementary school. So we don't want to get too caught up in the numbers. What we want to get caught up in is the conversation about what is sufficient and do we see, what do we see in the mirror? And just like every new year, what do we want to change to make us most effective?
And what I was going to say, this is just a part of the conversation we want our school leadership to look at and we want everybody to look at. We're also having exactly what you're saying. We're putting together in our HC dashboard, we're looking at mobility, we're looking at experience levels of teachers, we're looking at the effectiveness of teachers so that principals have in one place they can look at, and we're putting that together. Then you add this in, then you add in your performance framework. So now you're getting a clear picture of what you have. You can delve deeper into some of these things and some other areas. So it all plays into that picture of what is our school, what does it look like?
And as Shannon just reminded me, if you click the historical tab, you can pull up your 2012 data on the Tell MMPS website, and you can also grab the 2013 and the 2011 Tell Tennessee historical results. So it is still all online, but it's a question of what we put in front of educators as part of that summary. If you will, let me brag on you for a second and show you a couple of key trends, and then let me show you how to access the data so we make sure you have the ability to start looking at schools, okay? So again, I already gave you the headline, so to speak, which is MMPS continues to make progress on these measures, these measures that make a difference for kids and for keeping teachers. And ultimately, what we found is on every single question, educators were more positive. And again, we had similar response rate. The response rate went slightly down between 2013 and 2014, okay, only by a few percent. So roughly, we're looking at, we expect a very similar population, and what we have seen is improvements on virtually every question, okay? In particular, growth was most noticeable in the areas of instructional practices and supports, which is fantastic, and in the areas of time. Now, it's good that that growth happened in the area of time because if there was one construct, one area where we would say MMPS needed to do some work that we found out on the op here in terms of how positive educators are, it is in this area of time. And I'd like to note that in every district, in every state, the construct we find that teachers are most concerned about and least likely to have, and note, is area of time. There are just not enough hours in the day for the amazingly hard work your dedicated educators in schools do, okay? So what you can see here are the aggregate agreement rates. So again, this is the percentage of educators who agree and strongly agree. Mushed all together, this is everybody in the district. Principals, teachers, all other licensed personnel, okay? So what we see here is more than four out of five teachers have sufficient access to office equipment. Educators are positive about the resources that they have to provide quality instruction. Teachers have sufficient access to appropriate instructional materials, 86.3%, which is up 6% from 2013. Teachers have sufficient access to instructional technology, and you can see here, teachers have access to some of the basic foundational things to communicate with parents and each other, 94% agreement. And again, all of these are more positive, okay? Secondly, around instructional practices and supports, again, you can see some district aggregate agreement rates. Teachers are assigned classes that maximize their likelihood of success with students. 72% agree, so that's those teachers and principals and others put together, which is why it falls in between, right? That increased 6% since 2013. So in a year, we find 6% more educators respond that they're assigned classes that maximize their likelihood of success with students. Teachers work in professional learning communities to develop and align instructional practices, 85%. That is phenomenal. And we do the survey in places like Hillsborough, Florida, which is Tampa, Pittsburgh, and again, other states. This data is some of the highest that we see. 85% working in professional learning communities is phenomenal. And again, it has gone up 6% since 2013. As you talk about Common Core, 93% of educators say the curriculum taught is aligned. 96% of educators say teachers in the school use assessment data to inform their instruction, okay? And 93% say teachers are encouraged to try new things in their practice, okay? The underpinning of some of the success around instructional practices is good professional development. So let me give you a positive and something to work on. Remember back to that box B on that complicated chart I gave you, okay? Those teacher enablers that our researcher have shown really can be linked directly to value-added gains scores. Whether teachers have PD that helps them change their practice and that helps them accelerate student learning and their own perception, nine out of 10 educators in MMPS agree that the professional development they receive helps them change what they do in instruction, and they perceive helps them with student learning gains. That is fantastic. I call your attention, that's across the school. I call your attention as the guy who works for the New Teacher Center and is obsessed with your newest educators, 1,400 of them, a significant number, may need a little bit more additional professional development and support to be as effective as they can be, as quickly as they can be. And where MMPS needs to do a little work is around their induction and mentoring program. Only half of new teachers are assigned a mentor. On a positive note, that's up from 40% in 2013, which was amongst the lowest in Tennessee. That said, of the half of new teachers who are assigned a mentor, a third of them, a third of the half that actually got a mentor, never, ever, never, ever, never, 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 ever, never once analyzed student work with their mentor. And 40% of those who were assigned a mentor, never, ever, never, 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 ever, never, ever, ever, once were observed by their mentor so that their mentor could comment on their...
Nope.
See, this is why, I can put the microphone close. Yes, one more ever and maybe an additional never, okay? So again, professional development, when you think about the school and all educators, there's so much wisdom and excellence to draw upon, and applying a little more support to new teachers seems to be an area the district can grow on, okay?
Quickly before you leave the slide.
Yes.
You said 1,400 teachers as examples?
So 14, there are 1,400 new teachers in MMPS, which are teachers in their first three years. Respondents to the survey, we heard from roughly 965, okay, answered. They get this battery of additional questions. We only ask mentoring questions to teachers in their first three years because those of us who have been doing a job for longer than that, we figure their memory of their induction period may get a little hazy, okay? So we ask only teachers in their first three years. Of those 965, roughly 460 were assigned a mentor, right? So think about the number of teachers now, okay? That's more roughly 450 teachers, more than that, 475 teachers. Think about the number of students each of those new teachers touches if they're in elementary and in particular at a middle and a high school. They were not assigned a mentor to take on one of the hardest jobs in the world. Of those who were, 40% of those, of the roughly 475 that did get a mentor, 40% of them, 200 some odd, never once were observed by that mentor. So how can the mentor help if they've never seen them teach?
Too quick.
Does that help?
Too quick. Yeah, so a short answer.
Can you believe I used to work with legislators?
No.
True.
Did you ask the question of first-year teachers?
Yes.
Yes, so do we have that sample data available?
We can poll first year, you can't on the website, but we can work with the district to disaggregate teachers in their first year from those in their second and third. We can't do year two and year three because we asked experience ranges because we didn't want teachers to fear that their anonymity would be compromised. So we ask years of experience ranges, and we absolutely can get that to Central Office to provide to you.
And how do you differentiate mentor from principal, school leader acting as an instructional leader and mentor?
We ask new teachers if they received a variety of supports that includes mentoring. Mentoring is a subset, we would argue, of induction. Inducting is bringing someone into the profession, which really includes their PLC, which are working great, principals, which are working great. But do they have someone who they can go to when they struggle? Now, maybe they do that was not formally assigned, so I would encourage you to do more questioning, more research, and ask. But we can, we know from our own research at the New Teacher Center that mentoring can really make a difference for accelerating effectiveness and making sure new teachers are as effective as they can be as quickly as they can be. And what we see here is in MMPS, we're letting it happen sink or swim with a lot of new teachers. There are buildings and there are mentors and there are others who are enculturating and bringing new teachers in very well. And we see that in the data, and there are a host of people, new teachers, who aren't.
And just for the sake of time, we have one more presentation this evening, so we've got, and this is where you'll lose Dr. Gentry, you've got 20 slides.
Yeah.
So you hired her, now she's going to be gone because you've got 15 more slides.
No, it's okay, because I was actually at the end. So the good part is, and by the way, my nickname at the North Carolina State Board of Education is no slide left behind. But I also was told, now, of course, we had a lot of prep time for this. I won't tell you when the district and Dr. Register gave us a call, but thought we had about 60 minutes. So thank you for indulging me. Look at this last slide, and then I'll show you how to access the data. So the key piece is, what you see here is a scattergram, a graphic organization of all 151 schools with data in MMPS, okay? If you look at the horizontal axis, okay, that red dotted line is the MMPS district average if we smushed all the questions together, just like those researchers at Brown, into a single metric, into a single measure, okay? And again, let's be positive that if you were to ask an average question, four out of five educators agree with it, which is why it's set above 80%. If you look at the vertical axis, okay, the one going up and down, that is the district average improvement, and you notice that's above zero, that's a 3.7%. That was the average growth on a question across all our questions on the survey here in MMPS. So if you go to your top left, you see what we affectionately call fruit loops. Those colors represent whether it's an elementary, middle, or high school, and those schools that are in the top-left quadrant are schools that are above average in terms of their teaching conditions according to the survey, but have declined, okay? They have declined relative to the average if they're the left of the red dot, they have declined absolutely if they are to the left of the black line, okay? If you look at the top right, those are your schools that are knocking it out of the park. These are schools that exceed district average and have improved between 2014. They got it, and they're getting better, okay? You notice that there are a few fruit loops, so to speak, that are way out there, outliers, as we would call them. In fact, one school, on average, on a question, improved more than 40% on virtually every single question. They're there. And you can see, those are the schools that we can learn from. If you go to the bottom-right quadrant, you see schools that are improving but below average. They're trending in the right direction as we look at growth, but they're not there yet. These are schools that need to be encouraged. And what you see on the bottom-left is the quadrant where we know Central Office has really spent some time thinking and working with us and where the data training makes such a difference. These are schools that are declining and below average. These are schools that we can look at their data, and they may need some additional help in utilizing the results and looking at that reflection in a safe, positive way collectively, okay? So what you see here is, I gave you a district portrait, the real battle is school to school, right? I was once, I was presenting with Governor Easley, and he called me a statistician, which really hurt because I'm a policy wonk. And what he said was, you know statisticians, their heads are in the oven, their feet in the freezer, but on average, they're doing fine, okay? That's what we see here. On average, the district is doing phenomenally. What will really accelerate the effectiveness of the district and really make a difference across the whole district is really learning from those up in the top-left, or excuse me, the top-right quadrant two and trying to take some of those practices and really work with teacher leaders and school leaders in the bottom-left quadrant three, okay? So you can get your data online at Tell MMPS. You can download summary data for aggregate results. We have three different kinds, comparisons to 2013, summary and detailed data. We also have tools, and we'll continue to do more work in training with the district with your help.
Okay. Any final questions, Ms. Pearl?
I just had a few comments based on things that I've heard from teachers, and they're pretty much based on the Tell survey from last year, I haven't heard anything specific about this year's survey. But one of the complaints that they had about the survey is that it does not have a comment section where they can write, you know, anything that comes to mind. The other thing that I've heard, which it sounds like you debunked this theory, but some of the teachers think that the survey is somehow linked to their email addresses, and that goes back to the trust issue. So I don't know if we just need to make that clear, that, I don't know where that came from, but maybe it's something that we, the district, can do to make it, make them understand that this really isn't an honest survey. And then I think it's really encouraging data at the school level, it's fantastic. But I think what a lot of teachers that I, you know, there are a lot of teachers that are unhappy that I know of, and what they're reacting to is not necessarily what's happening at the school level. This survey's about, you know, do you, you're working well with your principal, you're working well with your fellow teachers and that kind of thing. They are reacting to mandates from our Central Office or mandates from the state. And I heard our Commissioner of Education speak a few weeks ago, and he was saying that the Tell survey was proving that teachers are very happy across the state with what they are doing at the state level. And I don't think that's necessarily true, you know? So I think it would be interesting to see if we incorporated something beyond just the walls of the school. Maybe, maybe there's something that I'm missing that, where we do have questions on that level. But those would be helpful because they, the teachers have to, sorry, the teachers have to respond not only to what's happening within the building, but to, you know, much higher level mandates coming down.
Those are all tremendously helpful. Let me try to quickly answer those three, which is, first of all, on the email, they get a piece of paper with an anonymous access code, and we try to encourage principals. We actually have a recommended process where we say, put them in the middle of the table, have people exchange, three people to the left, and do whatever they can to show them that that individual seven-digit access code is not tied to them. They were letters bundled together. We do not email codes, and they can take it from anywhere via the internet. So I think that is a communication challenge and one that can continue to take on. On the comment section, I want to go back to our original founding, right, which is, we do this statewide in Tennessee. We actually tried at one point to basically put people to a comment section in Maryland, and we received 20,000 pages of data. And what we said is, unless we are willing to truly read and look that through, we don't want to dishonor educators and have them do something that would not take up their time. As a district, I highly encourage you to think about the multitude of ways to gather data about culture and context. The survey's just one. Interviews, focus groups, your own work as board members, talking with constituents are different ways. This is more systematic with a valid and reliable, school-based instrument, but this is, this is not the end. It's the beginning, okay? In terms of the last piece about schools, this is the toughest one. And as you can imagine, we just finished surveying in North Carolina for the seventh time. In my state, we eliminated tenure. We are, have dropped from 25th in the country to 46th in teacher pay, so I highly encourage you to come across the border to recruit.
Hey, don't start any questions.
Not to recruit.
To recruit. No, to come. What we have heard from educators back is, how come you didn't ask me about tenure, testing, and these things? We very purposely said, those are really important things, but they're not things our survey will assess. We are going to look at a unit of analysis, this is school, and ask teachers things they smell here, feel every day that we have research that says make a difference. We have a few questions on evaluation, but not whether the state is going in the right or wrong direction. That's what we think they'll talk about in the school, as much as it's productive. We ask whether a teacher... We ask whether teacher evaluation is consistently implemented, because that is something that can work at the school level. There may be a need to gather this data, but this data, all this data can tell you is whether educators perceive certain conditions that we know make a difference are in place in their school. The cause of those and the role of the state versus the district, we didn't think teachers necessarily could weigh in on, nor did we think a survey was the best way to get that out, at least our survey.
Did you ask specific questions about quantity of testing or those sorts of things on the survey?
The only questions we asked is about time spent, and again, there's no normative value, there's no judgment. It's, "How much time in an average week do you spend on the following activities?" Okay? And there's a whole litany from individual planning time to collaborative planning time to planning for assessments, administering assessments, and using the results. Those are the three areas around assessment we ask on time, and we traditionally find in states, there is as much time spent administering assessments as there is actually planning for them and using their results. And that is across a multitude of states.
Dr. Gentry?
So, I'm dizzy. I'm not a captain. Bribing.
I'm sure it wasn't the data.
No, it wasn't the data. But I want to kind of go backwards a little bit on the comment about not having comments, an opportunity for comments. So, you know, we do the same thing, I think probably at many companies, where I think it's, you may want to consider actually gathering the comments, but making it very clear you intend to do nothing with them but pass them along. So I think it's just the opportunity to gather them, even if you don't read them, you don't assess them, we do them at work. We can put in comments, but the Gallup Corporation that administers our survey does nothing with them but passes them on to the department. So if that's an opportunity. I wouldn't suggest another survey to assess testing, because if I understand appropriately what the purpose of this survey is, it really is about establishing a school environment that supports academic success. And whether that's, and if we believe, as we continue to say around this board table, that it's about the instructional leader, the principal, establishing the right culture, then what goes on at the state should be, may have an impact on how people feel about it, but they should be able to view what's going on in the building separate from that. I think we have an opportunity with the types of questions to do some sort of pulling out different data points and doing analysis. So I would compare the results in responses around time and the results around mentoring, because I may have a mentor that just doesn't have the time to mentor me. So, you know, I don't know if we have the ability to pull data points and put them on a graph together to do some cross-analysis, or to request it, but I think that's the way we need to do it. I would not want a survey to ask a question that would lead me to, on face value, make a decision. It has to be a part of that data culture's responsibility. I'm assuming the data coaches that use the data that we talked with Paul about are the same ones that are using this information, that forces a conversation to take place. Because there's too many other things, and Dr. Register alluded to it when he says we've changed principals. So I'd be very wary of plotting data from 2011 to 2014. There's been too much change to be able to make any consistent and reliable decisions based on what that data would tell you. And so there's too many factors that affect how people respond to these types of questions. And so I think we should be very careful to, number one, because I'll tell you, the group of people we have sitting in front of you love to see something happen when numbers don't look the way we think they should look. And so I want to caution us to not believe there's some immediate thing, one thing, that can be done to change these numbers. And so, you know, because, you know, we'll come up with a resolution, or we'll have a policy meeting and try to bake this into something, somebody will try to put it on Dr. Register's evaluation to move these numbers. These numbers are about helping teachers and principals establish a culture of success within their individual schools. And so let's make sure we, and I know you keep mentioning it, but I know you're trying to get to the data and pat us on the back, and so you mentioned it briefly between those things, but I want to bring to the forefront, the purpose and the value of this data is not to be, we don't want it to be punitive when the people take it, we shouldn't treat it as punitive as we view it. So it is truly to inform instructional leaders about helping to strengthen and establish a culture of success if we're going to be consistent about what we've been saying about the past few years about who's responsible for that culture, and it's definitely not the state.
Now, you have no choice but to come back to Pearl with that. The value is in the conversation. We just know that if you said, whoever doesn't think there's an atmosphere of trust and mutual respect in this school, raise your hand, then people are going to go like this a little bit? No, I think I'll keep it down. That's why we ask in an anonymous way. The power is the conversation. The driver to ensure conversation occurs is, one, some real clear tools. We've cross-watched the school improvement plan with some of our question items, we've tried to put up some prompts, we've tried to train folks, and the other driver to that is the academic performance framework that includes culture measures along with achievement measures, along with student perception data in a meaningful way, so you can look at that data, but the way you make meaning from it and make change is the conversations you're talking about.
Sure, I'll say, sure. Stop. Ms. Pearl has one more comment.
I just want to say, so when I'm talking about the state or what we're doing as a district, I'm saying that only to point out that I think there should be some opportunity, maybe it's just not in the survey, for teachers to express what it is that is affecting their ability to be effective. And I think a big part of that is outside the walls of that local school. And maybe there, I just maybe I need to look at the questions closely, and maybe there's more opportunity here than I recognize. But I know in the statewide, I don't know how the survey results score for the entire state of Tennessee, but we've had, you know, we've had like a doubling of retirement in the last five years or some, some really high retirement rate, and I think that reflects the mood of some of the teachers in the state. So I sort of looking for something, I guess, larger than just the school.
And I think there's a need to triangulate data.
Yeah.
To ask more questions, to kind of dig in, because I think you can't make assumptions just from looking at this at a high level. And a lot of these data present opportunities for a multi-year strategy. Some of these things can't happen tomorrow, and some of them can't happen next week. So I think that we have opportunities at the district level and at the school level to look at this data, this data, and this data, and how does it all work together, and what kinds of questions do we need to be asking of each other to kind of drive change?
It answers whether. It does not try to attempt to answer why. The "why" comes out through dialogue and conversations about what they see.
And I'm sure if you talked about those time responses, that's where you find a lot of testing and mandates from the state.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, for being here with us.
This kind of goes along the lines of when the technology folk, who did not want to leave, lots of other questions going on.
So just a quick observation, Ms. Pearl, about, a quick observation about your comment. The way I look at the data and the change and the trend is that it is in context of what's happening in the state. So when we see improvements, attitudes at the school level, I think that's really good if we have concerns about what's going on in the state in the context. We are, our next agenda item is legislative update. Legislature closed last week, and we've got Hank here, and we also have Robert and Elizabeth with Southern Strategy back in the back. Hank, are you not inviting them to the table?
I did, and they declined.
Oh, they declined?
I think it'd be great if you guys would just come on, because we may have questions. Come on up, come on.
But Hank's going to carry the conversation here.
Great. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Register. We are excited for the legislative session to be over. A lot happened last week. A great deal happened last week, much of it to our students' benefit, and I look forward to reporting on that today. Ms. Bobo has passed out the legislative update to orient you to this page. Much of the bills we've been tracking.
I don't know, make sure it's on, because I can't hear behind you.
Much of the bills we've been tracking throughout the legislative session, and there are a few that we added that have happened recently that we'd be happy to talk about as well. So we'll go down the page, starting first with Common Core. So the Common Core state standards, as you know, the legislature had been pushing back on those to a good bit. There was a compromise that was developed last week, and it passed. That compromise would freeze the Common Core state standards where they are for math and English language arts. However, it would require the expansion of other subject areas to go through approval from the state board with a public notification period, as well as notifying the education committees of the House and the Senate. Additionally, TCAP will be administered again next year. Originally, next year was the first year for the PARK assessment to be used. TCAP will be used again next year. They will rebid that assessment, that Common Core-aligned assessment. There was not as dramatic a language that was originally floated around that would have prohibited any assessment that had been aligned with Common Core to be, that would have prohibited any assessment that had been developed by the same people who developed Common Core to be used. And so PARK would be eligible to be a part of the rebid, and that rebid would then have to go back through the Fiscal Review Committee and the state legislature to give them some oversight in the process as well. Any questions about that?
On this RFP process, was there any talk at all about creating our own assessment as opposed to using those that have already been established?
That's a good question. I'm not sure I'm aware of that.
There's a requirement in the conference committee report that the General Assembly approved that the RFP would have to require that the exam have field testing, and that field testing would have had to happen before the end of this calendar year. So it appears to limit it to at least two or three assessments that would be Common Core-wise.
And just to clarify that, I have that conference committee report, and I think it's field testing for the 15-16 school year could be included, so we'll check on that and get back to you, Ms. Shepherd.
Please have a question.
Just a quick question. Did we lobby one way or the other for this? Were we, you know, we spent a lot of money and time and effort and resources behind PARK and getting ready for PARK? I'm just wondering, were we aggressively supporting this, or were we on the other side?
First of all, I don't lobby, but second of all...
Your colleague's to the right.
Second of all, yes, we were pushing, Dr. Register wrote a letter supporting the use of PARK, continued use of PARK. We were working with all of our contacts to explain how important this was to our students and...
So how about for the lobbyists here, right? What was your position?
We lobbied in favor of Common Core and keeping the PARK assessment in place. There was a tremendous pushback from the legislature to restructure this from a number of different kind of issue advocacy groups, and we feel like, all things considered, this was the best possible scenario that we could affect an outcome toward.
May I ask a question? Is there a possibility to become a part of a pilot? Is there a possibility to become a part of a pilot to use the PARK?
Yes, Dr. Brandon, I believe so. This will be something that Dr. Register and the district will decide. We are very interested in making sure that our students don't fall behind other students, not only in Tennessee but around the United States. And so we want to make sure that we're at the forefront of whatever's happening, including the possible field test next calendar year, next week.
So what I would support is an opportunity to field test on a district-wide basis, whatever the state aligns and chooses as a test to evaluate or hold us accountable for Common Core standards. What I would not support is double testing. And I think, you know, we've heard so much of that, we don't need to do TCAP and something else. We field tested this year, and let me just say that, we field tested part of this year, and there was a very particular reason for that. We've got 30 percent of all English learners in the state. They needed to be a part of the norming process to norm the test. And we have a high percentage of free-to-reduce price lunch, and a high percentage of minority students in our school system. And if we had not done field test, then those groups of children might have been underrepresented in the norming of the test, which was to occur this year. So, but going forward, I would very much support us field testing as a district. Any new assessment chosen, and we've had a number of conversations, Dr. Changus is back there, about are there negative reactions to that? But the other thing I would say, and what we've heard from the teachers loudly, is let's just start over, let's don't try to tie a transition to teacher evaluation for a year. And I would support that, that we not do that. And the reason is, there's not a way to, there will be an implementation to it. And that's because of the new test. It's not because a teacher's not doing as good a job, or a child doesn't know as much as he or she knew the year before. So let's use TCAP, and let's start over and establish a baseline, and let's keep our kids ahead of the curve, if you will. I would, I do not like the idea of our children being a year behind and going to a new assessment. And that's the position that we take.
And Ms. Shepherd, to follow up on your question, I'm reading straight from the conference committee report. Prior to the 2015-16 school year, such tests shall be field tested and shall replace existing assessments in the applicable subject area. So they could be field tested next spring or sometime before the 15-16 school year.
So I think my understanding is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I've heard that the governor's saying that he's recommending that, and I think it goes to conference committee, is that right? Is it going to a conference committee or something?
It did.
That they will rebid and select a new assessment by the middle of the, by the end of December, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. See, that gives you time to be able to do that. So I would hope that we could make a request to be field tested, be my position.
Moving down the list, unless there's any other questions about Common Core state standards, the state-level charter authorizer passed, I believe that we have talked about that to a great extent, and have you asked, any questions you have about that?
We don't want to talk about it.
Vouchers, the governor's plan failed. It got caught up in the House and was not heard in committee, and so that's...
I have a question about that one.
Yes.
What's the likelihood that we'll see that again for a third year?
I would say very highly.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. So my issue with this bill is not really about how it got caught up. My issue with this bill is the special needs clause that is included in here that a lot of people, I'm finding, were not even aware was in there. So can you explain what that is? Because I've been talking a lot about it for the last couple of weeks, and I hear, I didn't realize that was there. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of what that is.
And I think there were probably three different bills that were filed, I'm not sure that provision...
I think it was on the last one, it was the last revision.
It was, and what everybody referred to, that's the governor's bill. Essentially, the parent is acknowledging that the services that are available at that school are all the services that your child's going to receive if you decide to take, pursue a voucher.
And from what I understand, parents have to sign off on some documentation that basically says, if they want their child to go to, you know, ABC private school, and they have 10 things of special needs programming that they need, if this school only offers one or none, and they want their child to go there, they sign up and say, well, we'll take the one.
That's correct.
Or we'll take none. And so that child goes into the school without any kind of special needs services provided. That is what bothered me about this bill more than anything else. So I'm watching it like a hawk. We have a lot of children in our district who, a lot of parents who may not have been aware that that was even in there. So I just wanted to make sure that people were aware. Thank you so much, Alana.
And I'd like to follow up with that, Chairman Mays. In addition to waiving those services for your child at that particular time, depending on how the cost is allocated in that private school, you may be allocating your child's future IDEA dollars as well, that not only are you waiving your immediate rights, but you could be waiving future rights. And we have a number of concerns about making sure that is communicated very, very succinctly and directly to parents, because we don't want to be in a position where they have waived their child's future rights without realizing the long-term implications of that. That's difficult both for the child and for the system. Should the child come back, you may not have federal dollars available to provide services in the future. So as you talk to your constituents about that, that's a very concerning issue that we would hope you would remember to remind them as well.
That's another valid point. Thank you for that.
Great. Moving down the list is a bill that you all had a resolution on, I believe at the last board meeting about guns and parks. As you recall, many of the... As you recall, many of the parks are near our schools or even co-located with our schools. This bill failed as well. Any questions about that? The next one, I'd like to pause and thank our class representation, Robert and Elizabeth, for their great representation down on the Hill. Because of them, we still have the ability to have representation, both through them and through TSBA, and toss the bill that would have allowed Metro Council to line item veto any issues that, any expenses related to lobbying failed as well. The bill that would have expanded the role of the Achievement School District Charter Schools to enroll students who are not in the Achievement School District failed. That bill had been amended in a couple ways that we talked about before, but that failed as well. Additionally, to remind you, the bill that would have allowed for-profit charter operators to operate in Tennessee failed. The mayor wrote a letter opposing this, and the Speaker of the House, Speaker Harwell, spoke out against this as well. The parent trigger bill failed this past week. This would have lowered the threshold to around, to 51% for parents to either convert a traditional public school into a public charter school, or to turn around in a different sort of way. That would have also limited to parent triggers to schools in the bottom 10%, but that bill The Nashville Area Chamber of Commerce and the Tennessee Charter School Center, as well as a lot of other stakeholders, worked on the default closure of charter schools that are identified as priority schools. So this bill passed, and it passed because all of these groups came together. If a charter school identifies a priority school in the state's accountability, accountability system, then the charter school is automatically closed by the chartering authority.
That is an interesting one to me as well. Because I'm really curious about timelines. I would hope that, well, maybe I should rephrase that. I would think that there should be someone at the state level that understands timing. If a school is scaling, are they going to shut it down immediately? Are they going to give it three years to see if there's some sort of improvement past the point where they are now? What exactly, what type of timeline are we talking about in this state's accountability system? I'd be really interested to know what that, what that really meant.
This would be the priority list that is, it's done for all of the schools in Tennessee, that achievement school list.
When does that, when does that release?
October? Some, yeah, hard to say, but somewhere in late summer, early fall, I guess is about the best week to narrow it down, but it'll happen this year.
And would that call for immediate closure?
At the end of that current school year.
If it comes out in the fall of this year, the school, the school basically will have already started. So at the, at May, June, whatever the end of the school year is, that school closes. And so what about notification to parents? Will they get that notification immediately once the decision? And I'm just kind of wondering about the timeline. So if the list comes out in, say, October, who is going to notify parents that this school will close by the end of the year? And how is that going to work with, you know, I'm just looking at timelines here. How soon will that notification come? Come on up, Alan.
And Cheerleader Mays, Alan can speak to this, but we also have the bill here to read from.
Well, I don't know. You may have to correct me if I say something that's out of line with the bill. The timeline on this should follow pretty much exactly the timeline that we've proposed for recommended closure of the multiple-year target schools. The difference is that we notified the schools last fall that contingent on this data that action would be taken, and then the rest of the school year would be the time communicating to the parents, doing that ahead of the optional schools' choice period, and making sure that every family in that school has a good choice, and it can maximize their choices for the next year. This, this should follow the same timeframe. The only difference might be that it might be released in September, whereas our academic performance framework might not be run until the first of October. But it's going to be in that same ballpark and take effect at the end of the year.
But we're not making the decision to close the schools.
Well, this, we are. This is just, because these are our schools that we've chartered, so ultimately we close them. What this gives us the authority to do, as I understand it, is simply to consider the school already closed, and to have to make an affirmative argument to keep it open.
I guess that's what I'm getting to. Who makes, who makes that initial contact with parents once the decision has been made?
We will do that. And, and, you know, any of our schools that are in that category where they likely could be on that list in the fall have already been notified. They're in the set of schools that we already notified last year as being likely candidates on our own system as well. But we will, we will make that communication. We will, you know, we will help, help families get into the optional schools process and make other choices, the same as we would with, if we took the initial action.
Okay, we just need to be, I just wanted to be clear on this because it, I just wanted to be clear on it. Mr. Hayes?
Just a follow-up question on the timeline. To be deemed a priority school in the state's accountability system takes three years of data? Two years of how much, how long?
It is three years of data, three subjects, right?
Typically, it's three years. This year, they're doing it after two years.
Two years of data. So if a school was to open in the fall of '14, they would have the '14, '15, '15, '16 school years, and could be notified as early as the, of October of '16, that they would, could face closure.
Well, not for the usual cycle. I mean, that, that, I think you'd have to look at this year's, let's put it this way. For a school to be identified on the priority list, it'll have to have the full complement of data, whether two or three years, that the state would use for all the other schools. And so if it's not gotten to that point, if it's a year short of that point, it wouldn't be included in the state's measures. However, our performance and our analysis could still have to close it. This is a, this is a minimum on closure rather than a maximum.
To some degree, I really, really like the fact that there's an automatic closure provision because it politicizes the issue for us, right? You could make the argument that at times this board has not necessarily closed schools that could have been closed. And if there's an automatic provision from the state that does that, that, some people may say that that's good. I'm somebody who, I think, not having read the bill, likes the idea. But I'm curious on how long it takes. And then if a school's a startup school and has, so they've only been open two years, and they've taken on just two grades, so, right, let's say it's a middle school, they have a fifth and a sixth grade class, but is that enough data? Or do they have to get fully ramped up as a middle school that took fifth through eighth?
In general, we're thinking about three years' data here, and that's really the plan. There's an anomaly in potential in how the state calculates, and so it'll, those questions will kind of flow to the state for this particular time in terms of how they calculate it, but they'll produce a list that measures all the schools the same based on those achievement measures. And if the school's in the bottom 5%, then it falls into this category. In general, you're talking about a set of three years' data, and I think that's the normal expectation, rather than just two. But it still could be grades five through seven, for instance.
Thank you.
This next bill was also a collaboration with Metro General Government. Our own Craig Ott identified a gigantic hole that we have not talked to you about in our criminal background check. We then worked with Metro Council Cathy Simbeck, who then worked with the general government lobbyists to help advocate for this bill, and it passed, and it closed that large loophole, which goes back several years into, that were absent before. The next section are undocumented student bills. These are ones that we've talked about a good bit. Just to remind you, the Tennessee Promise does not include provisions for undocumented students. Their undocumented students also do not receive in-state tuition. However, US citizens who have their parents that are undocumented, they do receive in-state tuition due to a new bill that passed this year. Then the last bill that we highlighted on this list was one that Ms. Speeran was interested in, that Mr. Garrison reported on this morning, about the assessments and the need to public notice them through our website and through the Tennessee Department of Education. There was a bill that required the Tennessee Department of Education to list every state-mandated assessment by July 15th on their website, and then local school districts to post those same assessments on their websites by July 31st, to give parents information about what's coming and what to expect for their students. Any other questions about those, or any other bills that you might be interested Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Appreciate it. I think I will have some questions for you about HB 1992 to 1929. I just want to do a little bit more research on them. Thank you very much. All right. All right. I will leave it to board members for final comments. Dr. Gentry? Dr. Brandon?
Yeah.
Ms. Speeran? Ms. Kim? What's coming on? Ms. Shepherd?
Kathy?
Mr. Hayes?
Governor.
Ms. Froden?
I've got some. I apologize for, I have a statement that I wanted to make about the charter approval process, and I apologize for bringing it the last few minutes. I'm sure this is not the most opportune time to make a statement, but I think it's, I want to raise several points that I think are important for us to consider as we move forward with the charter, charter approval process this year and also for upcoming years. I feel that we are at a crossroads right now with regard to charter schools and charter growth, and we have an opportunity to decide what, what direction that we as a district want to take. We took a big step with our resolution to direct charter growth this year, but I think we need to go a few steps further to identify an end game. Last year, I voted against some charter schools because of fiscal impact. I'm inclined to do the same this year unless we come up with a plan. If we're going to pay for, for charter schools, we need to figure out what else we will cut from the budget, because as we all know, our funding is limited. Until this year, it appears that we've just sort of been passively responding to charter school applicants and approving those that meet our requirements. But I think we need to hit sort of a pause button to think strategically about and completely re-envision how to use charter schools in our system. Several questions came to mind that we might consider during this year's process and next year's. First, how, how many charter schools do we, do we intend to have? How many can we financially support? What sort of accountability and transparency will, will we demand of charter schools? How will we ensure that charter schools are inclusive of every child, even those with special needs? And I think some of that came up tonight with, in the comments that Dr. Coverstone made about diversity. How do we ensure that all children have access to our charter and choice schools? And will we require that new charter schools provide the same course offerings as other schools, including art, music, and PE taught by licensed teachers? I want to talk a little bit about the history of charter schools and what's been happening at the legislative level around this movement, and then talk about some of the dangers I think we're facing. The early visionaries of the charter school movement imagined that charter schools would be directed and led by teachers, who would be granted freedom to try new solutions outside district and principal imposed rules. Charters were to focus on creativity and innovation and learning, rather than rote learning or performance on standardized tests. Charter schools were to work collaboratively and in harmony with school districts in an effort to catch children who would otherwise fall through the cracks. Many charter schools today have become something very different, as corporations, not educators, are increasingly involved in setting their direction. Charter schools have become competitors with traditional schools for funding and for students. These schools, which have only a few years to make test scores before the threat of closure becomes reality, are often operated by noneducators and staffed by young teachers who work extremely long hours and leave after a few years, keeping costs low. Charter schools have high rates of principal and teacher turnover. Charter schools differ from traditional schools in key ways. They often operate with additional funding from investors and have the advantage of selectivity. Unlike traditional public schools, charter schools can limit their enrollment and admit students only on an annual basis without accepting new students mid-year. They can set academic behavior and cultural standards that promote exclusion of students via attrition. Charter schools are not required to keep students who are not a good fit for their model. And more broadly, charter schools are choice schools, and research has shown that children of engaged parents, those who make a choice, tend to perform better in school. Although there are many involved in the charter school movement who have excellent motives, the charter school movement overall has become increasingly tied to profit motives as corporations interfere with education. I have watched organizations with shadowy motives exploit our Tennessee legislature. They operate like vultures, feeding hefty campaign donations and bad information to legislators through their plentiful lobbyists. They do not operate in good faith. The charter movement is nationally funded and driven by organizations like ALEC, the American Legislative Exchange Council, which promotes and protects corporate interests and works to pass legislation that allows corporation, corporations access to more profits. The state charter authorizer bill came from ALEC, by the way. The Waltons, owners of Walmart, which is notorious for paying its employees such low wages that they must rely on government assistance to eat, are driving charter legislation. Hedge funders, banks, and the wealthiest Americans can double their investments through generous tax credits in just seven years by investing in charters. Surely, groups like these, whose exclusive focus on the bottom line has led to immense personal wealth, are not primarily interested in helping low-income children. The goal at the legislative level is to gain access to a steady stream of tax dollars with limited public accountability. That's why these special interest groups contend that there should be no democratically-elected school boards. The desired result is to squelch the democratic process in favor of appointed bureaucracy, to take away local control of schools, and to promote less accountability and transparency for charter schools. So despite the good intentions of some local charter school operators, teachers, and proponents, there are very good reasons that I am deeply worried about the growth of charter schools in our own district. I see immense dangers, and we need to set our own limits to protect against the exploitation of students. So I've got four dangers that I think we should consider as we approve and consider new charter schools. The first is fiscal impact. I won't talk too much about that because we've had a lot of discussion about fiscal impact. But I will say that if you look at cities around the US with large numbers of charter schools, places like Philadelphia and Memphis, they are in financial distress, not completely because of charter schools, but in part. And the traditional schools there are not receiving fair funding, and we need to protect against that. Second of all, second danger, there is evidence that charter schools may be causing increased segregation, and there's potential to create a separate but unequal system of schools. Charters and other reform measures can, can serve to segregate schools not only by race, but also by socioeconomic, by parental engagement or choice, and by student ability. Charter schools like private schools often do not serve children with disabilities, particularly those with severe disabilities, or children who don't speak English, and these are the most costly and challenging to educate students. Traditional schools are beginning to serve as dumping grounds for charters and other choice schools. Just last month, I spoke with an East Nashville teacher who complained to me that her low-income school received 30 students back from charter schools in the three weeks before testing. Another teacher recently interviewed with a charter school whose leader told her directly that they just, quote, "get rid of students with behavioral problems." I also received a call from an attorney who works with families of special need students, who called me to complain about charter schools releasing challenging, challenging children. Burdening traditional schools with large populations of challenging-to-educate students cripples these schools, leading to poor outcomes for students. And our traditional schools right now serve the vast majority of our population, 95%, so I think we have to address this issue. Fourth, third danger, I'm sorry. The third danger is the loss of innovation and creativity in the classroom in favor of test prep for tested subject areas, and the possible loss of autonomous thinking. Charter schools are all different, of course, and I have general, sorry, charter schools are all different, but I have general concerns about the lack of substantial time spent on non-tested subjects, including art, music, and PE. I would like to have more information about that. And I'm deeply concerned about punitive models like no-excuses schools. I think we need to think long and hard as a board about this issue. In some of these schools, there may be little to no opportunity for healthy social and emotional learning, which in my view is much more important than test scores. The fourth danger is that unchecked charter growth and the resulting school closures can disrupt communities. There is no real evidence that competition is improving educational outcomes, and we need to protect against creating a revolving door for schools. Research shows that school closures primarily impact low-income and African-American communities. Trying out experimental schools at the expense of students and communities should not be the direction that we take. Based on all that I know now, I don't think it's a good thing to continue opening corporate-model charter schools that compete with existing schools and have the ability to cancel out students. However, here is what I would consider supporting. First, I think we have to support our existing charter schools, but ensure that account, but ensure accountability for them just beyond test scores. They're part of our system, they're serving our students, and I think unchecked charter growth, growth in the district will damage those relationships. I would support the use of charter schools as they were originally intended, to try out different strategies that we then take back to existing schools. As far as I can see, I'm not sure we're doing that now, but I could be wrong. As far as I can see, I'm not sure we're doing that now, but I could be wrong. I would support the use of charter schools as collaborative helpmates to existing schools, and I would support leveling the playing field by applying the same rules for charter schools and traditional schools with regard to attrition, accountability, and transparency. I would support ensuring that all schools, including charters, offer a broad curriculum that includes the arts, physical education, foreign language, et cetera. And I would support the use of charter schools to extend education beyond the classroom to meet children's needs. Example, that would be the Harlem Children's Zone. So those are just some points I don't expect to make your response unless you want to, that I have been thinking about and felt the need to raise tonight. And I have one other issue, and then I'm sure everybody wants to go home. Before you, go ahead.
Before you say and go any further, let me just say, thank you for your points, and I think we've all talked a lot about charters around here. One of the things that I want to be sure that we're very careful of, and I've said this to board members before, we need to be very careful about how we approach situations like charter schools versus traditional public schools, magnet schools, private schools, whatever, because the actions of some can become the crosses bare by all. And what I mean by that is the same things that, the points that you just made about charter schools, people are making about traditional public schools. I've had a lot of parents say to me that I won't put my child in a traditional public school because the school over there has poor test scores. And so then we become the same thing. You know, we are, that parent is basing their decisions, that parent is basing their decisions on one thing. You know what I'm saying? So while I believe that a lot of what you said may be true, we need to be very careful to highlight the quality education that our children are getting in some of the charter schools that are already here. So thank you for your comments on that, and of course, the discussion surely will continue. So, any other comments?
Oh, we'll have another...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
But on this, any other comments on this particular? Go ahead.
Okay. I would just like to ask that, at our next meeting, if we could get a report from our attorneys on the SEIU MOU lawsuit, that, because I know there was a, there was a ruling back in October, and I just kind of wanted to know where we stand on that. That's it.
And look, just as a reminder, well, you know what, I won't even go into that right now, but, okay. Anything else? All right, Ms. Prog.
This meeting's adjourned.